That you would give everyone here your wisdom, your sense of justice, that justice that shows no partiality, whether it's to the wealthiest among us or to the poorest. Your word says that righteousness exalts a nation, and I say that it exalts a city. So we ask that our city be governed with your righteousness at its very foundation. We also ask that you carry out that sense of justice through your people with a balance of mercy and with your anointing. Tonight, as we gather to speak with one another concerning the homeless, I ask that you would give us not only wisdom, but a spirit of discernment that will help us to gather your plans and your purposes that they be accomplished. We ask for you tonight to be our mediator, and that there would be unity even in our diversity. Give us ears to hear each other, and especially you. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are honored to have Coach Rogers, part of his coaching staff, and part of the mighty Yellow Jackets, who are the proud owners of the Acts for seven years straight. That's a seven. And we were, we are honored that they will come here tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're gonna have Wesley Brooks lead you guys. You've been looking forward to this all day long.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
So, gentlemen, one of my favorite weeks of all the year is the week leading up to the Battle of the Acts, when the community spirit is off the charts, and we all have a singular goal, and that is to beat the Bearcats.
In your email, you told me your single goal was to not score in the room.
That's right. I was getting to that. So, you know, I've never had the opportunity to do this, to thank you personally for saving my dignity, because for the last two years, I've had some skin in this game, you know, and I will admit that the last game, I sweated a little at halftime, but you, but the coach told me I should have had faith, so next time, that's exactly what I'll do. So, many, many thanks to you, from me personally and from our community, for, for your sportsmanship and your hard work and your commitment to, to our school. So if you will meet me at the podium, I have a very special proclamation that I want to read.
Well, I'm sorry, ma'am. And while we're waiting, we really had a lot more. We practiced about 5:45, so if someone's printed over here to come today, there would have been a lot more. They wouldn't have gone back to seven o'clock.
All right. Proclamation from the City of Denison. Whereas the Sherman Denison Football Rivalry began in 1901, and is the longest continuous rivalry among all high schools in the state of Texas, and has become a tradition for both communities and both schools. And whereas Mr. Jack Parker, owner of a small ice cream parlor on Main Street across from the old Denison High School, wanted to create a symbol that represented a spirit of never quitting, good sportsmanship, and excellence in athletics, competitions between the two schools, and named the rivalry the Battle of the Acts. And whereas the first game for the actual act was played in 1949, and although only one team wins the act, both teams in school display sportsmanship and compete fiercely with the spirit of the act. And whereas Denison High School has won the last seven consecutive Battle of the Acts games, woo-woo, you know, and whereas the coaches and players who participate in Battle of the Acts strive to represent their community in a positive light, and have brought positive publicity to the City of Denison through coverage by Fox Sports Southwest and other local media outlets for the outstanding sportsmanship displayed. And whereas the Denison City Council desires to recognize the Denison High School football team for their hard work, dedication, and sportsmanship. Now therefore, I, Janet Gaud, as mayor and on behalf of the City of Denison, Texas, do hereby recognize the Denison High School football team and the spirit of football that resides in these young athletes, and the fierce bond that they highlight between our city and this iconic game, and wish them success in their 2019 season. Go Jackets! And you need to get wet.
Better hold the ashes.
One, two, three. Richard, you got what you want? Okay, are you through? Gentlemen, thank you so much. Thank you for letting us be a part of this. And congratulations again for all your success. And for Janet Gaud. This is Constitution Week. And if you don't know, it was a Monday, it was September the 17th, 1787, after a very long, hot summer that began the 25th day of May for the Constitution Convention. On that day, the Constitution was signed into being, and thus began the greatest experiment in democracy that man has ever known. And I think that this document has absolutely stood the test of time, and it is appropriate that we should honor it this week. So Janet Wagner is gonna join me up here, and we are gonna read this proclamation and make it official. How about you come over here with me? Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberty, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September the 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriot celebration which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Now therefore, I, Janet Gaud, as mayor and on behalf of the City of Denison, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week, and do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2019, as Constitution Day. Signed, Janet Gaud, Mayor of the City of Denison. Thank you. Citizens may speak on items listed on the agenda. In order to speak, a request to speak card must be completed and returned to the City Council upon arrival prior to the council meeting, the public comment section of the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes and must address items on the agenda. Citizens will be heard, but there will be no dialogue between the citizens and the council. Comments relating to the public hearing listed in the agenda will be heard when that specific item is heard. For tonight only, we will delay the comments on item 6F, the homeless resolution, until we address that agenda item. So the first item on our agenda to consider is the consent agenda, and please let the record show that we will pull item E and postpone it to an unknown date in the future. So I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with item E being removed as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Quay Tim Adams, a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4B, no, that's, that was part of the consent agenda. Item 5A, public hearing. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance amending the City of Denison zoning ordinance, Article 5, Section 28.5, off-street parking and loading requirements, Articles 4, Section 28.49, use regulations, and Article 6, Section 28.63, definitions. Mr. Medina.
Good evening, council and mayor. So this zoning ordinance change has a couple of things here. As you can see, we're adding the definition of a travel center to the allowed uses on our use table. This will give us a little more flexibility on projects going forward. It also allows for the issuance of a conditional use permit for cabinet and upholstery manufacturing shops in commercial zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval earlier this month on the 10th of this ordinance with one addition, which was added into the ordinance as you see in your packet, which includes a minimum of 10% square footage, a floor square footage, for the conditional use permit for cabinet manufacturers. This allows us to ensure that we have a little more, I guess, restrictions or qualifications for what a cabinet manufacturer is. Instead of just allowing a flat-out manufacturer in a commercial zoning, it encourages and requires a type of retail or showroom component to that use. City staff recommends approval. And here's that definition for a travel center. And our next slide here shows us the changes that'll be seen on the use table if adopted. As you can see, there's the conditional use permit requirement for commercials-type zoning or commercial districts, and there's our travel center uses added to that use table. And this was something that we had been talking about for a little bit now. There's potentially a new project on the horizon where the, the standard truck stop requirement just wouldn't really fit. Truck stop requirement usually includes, or as it's stated, I'm sorry, includes showers, truck vehicle repairs, parking longer than 12 hours, and the current business models in the industry are starting to change a little bit, and we wanted to make sure that we are staying on top of that and trying to attract new businesses to come to our area. So I'm present for any questions you may have, and again, this is a public hearing.
Questions from Mr. Medina. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances, specifically amending Article 4, Section 28.49, to establish cabinet or upholstery shop, manufacturing use in commercial district with approval of a conditional use permit, and amending Article 4, Section 28.49, Article 5, Section 28.50, off-street parking and loading requirements, and Article 6, Section 28.63, definitions to establish regulations to define and regulate travel centers.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Quay Tim Adams, and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a request for approval of a conditional use permit for the allowance of a bar to sell, serve, and dispense beer and wine for the Rail Yard Incubator LLC located at 507 West Main, Denison, Texas, Sep. 5020. Mr. Medina.
Good evening again, and this one is pretty straightforward here. You have the owner of the Rail Yard Incubator LLC here on Main Street, the applicant and then the owner of the property is requesting a conditional use permit to sell beer and wine. And the, the best approach here, working with the applicant, was even though there are going to be multiple restaurants type or eating establishments within this one building, if the owner can pull a conditional use permit and cover the whole facility, that'll give him more, more flexibility going forward with his projects. Let's see. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on September 10th. Staff recommends approval. The area is currently zoned central area. Here is the site, and we've notified property owners within 200 feet of the property, and as you can see, you have Fannin and My, and Main Street, and then Myrick here on the left. And here is the zoning. The blue is central area, and the yellow is commercial. And here is the location here. This is right across the street from CJ's. I've been notified by the, the applicant that they will be having acoustic music on the weekends. I think this is on Thursdays, Thursdays and Fridays is when they'll be having that. I'm present for any questions you may have.
Questions from council. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance providing for a conditional use permit for a bar to include the sale of beer and wine in the central area district on the property common known as 507 West Main Street, Denison, Texas.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf, and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from commercial to central area located at 701 West Chestnut, Denison, Texas, 75020. Mr. Medina.
Seems to be working. Do you have any issues?
No.
No, it just looks like that. All right, this item, let's see, where was I? Okay, so this is for the zoning change of the property located at 701 West Chestnut. The, the property is currently zoned as commercial. We're trying to, the applicant's trying to switch it to central area, which is very common in our downtown area. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on the 10th. City staff recommends approval. Here is the subject property in question. This is just north of our central fire department on Barrett Avenue and West Chestnut. Here is the zoning of the subject property. As you can see, you currently have central area zoned property to the north and to the west, and everything around is, is zoned as commercial currently. I'm sorry, to the south and to the east is zoned commercial. Here's the subject property. It is a vacant lot right now. The rezoning to central area will allow the developer to do some sort of retail, office space, or restaurant on your first floor, and then have lofts on the second floor for, for higher density usage. Present for any questions you may have.
Questions from council. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances, changing the zoning classification from commercial district to central area district on a certain tract of land legally described as being lots 31 and 32, Block 2, lanes addition to the City of Denison, Texas.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Spiegel, and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. The motion carries. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Denison for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019, and ending on September 30th, 2020, and appropriating funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Just to give you a little background, and then Judge's gonna speak to the budget, but staff has held ongoing meetings, as you're fully aware, since March on the fiscal year 2020 budget. Two workshops were held with council in April and June, and presentations have been made at city council meetings in both August and September. The draft budget and presentation that you have attached that was in the backup have any changes that may have occurred since those meetings, and any recommendations that council may have stated during those meetings. And the city manager has met with all departments and identified priorities and made recommendations based on those priorities. A public hearing was held on September 3rd, 2019 for citizen input, and we're here this evening for adoption of the budget. As a reminder, the ordinance requires a roll call vote once Mr. Rex has completed his presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's with pleasure that I present the budget for final consideration tonight. This represents months of work on behalf of the city council and the staff, and I do want to take just a few minutes and thank Renee and her staff for their hard work on the budget this year, all the divisions and departments that put, helped put the budget together, really beginning back in April. This represents a lot of hard work and, and time and effort put into the process, and, and it really just seems to come together at the end due to the great effort of Renee and her staff. So thank you, Renee, and to your staff as well. I also want to thank the council for your guidance and direction during the budget process. So I'll try to recap. We've talked about most of these things quite a bit, but for those, those here in the public want to recap some of the main components that are in the budget. As far as our, our funds go, our operating funds, we have a general fund and a utility fund. For fiscal 2020, we're looking at about a $29 million general fund budget and, and close to $14 million in the utility fund. We project some surplus, really just adding that in as a cushion for the year that will bring our days of reserve, both above 60 days for both funds, which is our minimum per the, per the council's policy. Our capital fund summary, we have two capital funds, the general capital fund and the utility capital, capital fund. These are funded by transfers from each of those operating funds to help fund equipment and, and capital needs for the departments. In the general side, we have about $312,000 that we're projected to spend, and on the utility side, close to $400,000 that we'll spend on capital this year out of these two funds. Specifically, there we go. General capital fund, again, you'll, you'll recognize some of these expenses. These represent some of the, the projects that we'll be moving forward with. On the utility fund side as well, again, just helping to support our water and sewer system and, and drainage system to keep those up to date. We're also included in the budget year two of implementing our enterprise fleet management program that will allow us to continue to replace our fleet and keep it up to date. Renee recapped this last time, but again, for the public, just want to outline some of the debt that we'll be issuing for the next year. A lot of it will go towards our infrastructure on the street side and on the water and sewer side, and then we'll also start Phase 1 of our downtown project next year. So all total, we're looking at about $26.1 million in, in debt issuances for the next, for next year. Quite a, quite a significant investment for us next year, so we're excited about that. Our budget this year, as you know, is made up of a lot of personnel expenses related to making sure that we can keep our, our positions here close to market, or as, as close to market as possible. We approved, or council approved previously, a new pay plan for civil service fire. The budget also includes a civil service police new pay plan that is in the budget, and also for all of our employees, non-civil service positions. We're trying to focus on some, around 70 employees total, bringing up, bringing them closer to market with a minimum 2% increase for, for all other positions. We have included a CIP manager position, a full-time position in the budget as well that'll be funded through the capital improvement program, and then a part-time city marshal, which is offset with projected revenue in that division. Our street improvement program, this is a huge part of our budget, is street improvements. We'll be investing, in addition to the large projects that we're moving forward with, which represent over $6 million in, in debt issuance for next year, we'll do a total of about $422,000 in overlay work next year as well. And over the next five-year period, we're looking to invest well over $20 million in, in streets as well. I do want to let the public know that we're, we're gonna hold a public meeting, a town hall meeting, in October to talk about the specifics of our street program, so we definitely invite you out to that meeting. That'll be on October 17th at 6:00 PM. We'll talk about streets and water and sewer, infrastructure improvements there as well, and have departments, all the city departments on hand to answer any questions that come up as well. And that just about does it. So again, staff recommends approval of the budget, and appreciate all the time and effort put on behalf of staff and the council to help, help us put this together.
Questions from council.
Just want to say thank you, Mr. Rex and Ms. Wagner, for all of your work on this. This is a big undertaking, and y'all were awesome the whole way through. It was, did great.
Thank you.
Yes, Renee, and Team, and Judge, we would all be remiss if we did not thank you for all your hard work, and now, Renee, you can go back to working 14 hours a day instead of 12. Thank you so much. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion and a second, but this does require a roll call vote.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Denison for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending on September 30th, 2020, and appropriating funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander, and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those, oh, Ms. Wallantine, would you conduct the roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. As I call your last name, if you'd please say yes or no. Hander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Greenleaf?
Yes.
Gott?
Yes.
Doty?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance approving the assessment roll as certified by the Board of Reviews of the Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of $1,510,467,960, levying the ad valorem taxes of the City of Denison, Texas, on all property, both personal and real, in the City of Denison for the year 2019, in the amount of .652034 for each $100 of assessed valuation, and providing for an apportionment of such ad valorem taxes. Ms. Wagner.
Thank you again, mayor and council. The proposed operating budget that was just passed for fiscal year 2020- The proposed operating budget that was just passed for fiscal year 2020 has general fund revenues at $29,592,556, which is supported in part by a proposed tax rate of .652034. The Grayson Appraisal District assessed property values for 2019 at $1,510,467,960 for this year's adjusted tax base. The operating budget is set to be adopted and was just adopted here at this meeting at the council chambers at 300 West Main. All this is required by the state, by the way. This adoption of the tax rate is necessary to support the budget. I know we received certified property values in July, and then we presented council with recommendations for the tax rate on August 5th, and public hearings were held on both August 19th and September 3rd during our council meetings, and we're set to adopt the tax rate this evening. You may recognize some of these slides. We have discussed these before, but we wanted to present this in case there were someone in the audience that have not seen these. Current tax rate, .633377. Our effective tax rate, what it would take to bring in the same amount of revenue as last year, is .610263. The rollback tax rate is .652034, and that's what we can set the tax rate back. That's the highest we can go back without an election. The proposed tax rate is the .652034. It's a 2.9% increase. The new property tax revenue that is generated from this, from existing property would be about $646,553, and from new property, $399,275. Additional revenue with the rollback is the $275,000 that you saw on our streets that we're going to put aside for streets as additional revenue, increasing the rate from the .633377 to the .652034. That's what we're going to do with that difference, okay? Here is a pie chart showing you Dennison resident property tax bill, and it shows you that city of Dennison tax rate is about a quarter of the entire property tax bill that people see. And here shows the city of Dennison, the 2.9% change. Grayson County, they are going down on their rate, 5.8%. Grayson College going down 3.1. Dennison ISD going down 6.8. So, total overall tax bill for citizens of Dennison is going down 4.1%. This kind of gives you an idea of home values and what the current tax bill is, and what that tax bill, proposed tax bill would look like and the difference, which of course, once again, is the 4.1% reduction. This is a roll call vote as well.
Questions from council. I will entertain a motion and a second, but this does require a voice vote.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of the Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of $1...
$1 billion.
$1,510,467,960, levying the ad valorem taxes of the city of Dennison, Texas, on all property, both personal and real, in the city of Dennison for the year 2019, in the amount of .652034 for each $100 of assessed valuation, and providing for the apportionment of such ad valorem taxes.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Protim Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. Ms. Wallantine, would you conduct the voice vote?
All right, as I call your last name, please say yes or no. Hander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Greenleaf?
Yes.
Gott?
Yes.
Doty?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
And Spiegel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2020 budget. Ms. Wagner.
Thank you again. If the city is adopting a budget that requires more property tax revenue than last year, council must also vote separately to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget. As stated previously, the budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $646,553, which is a 7.93% increase from last year's calculations, and the property tax to be raised from new property this next year is $399,275. Staff is recommending approval. No roll call vote.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Wagner. A motion.
Mayor, I move to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander, a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item 6D, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance establishing revised rates and changes for water and sewer. Ms. Wagner.
Thank you again. Last, but certainly not least, the city of Dennison has an ordinance in place that sets forth rates for water and sewer service. During the budget process, we've proposed to council increases to water and sewer rates over a five-year period in order to fund necessary capital improvements and maintenance and operations. We started off showing these slides back in April at our mini budget workshop, but just wanted to go over those again in case there are any questions this evening. And there are two components to the water sewer rates, the fixed rate, which is also known as the base rate or meter rate. It is the rate that the user pays to support maintenance and capital needs of the system as well as other known fixed costs. The variable rate, which is also known as the consumption rate, it is the portion of the rate that should account for the cost of production, your operating cost. Dennison continues to face capital improvements needs within the water sewer system. Back in 2014, we began this CIP initiative, and at that time, we set a five-year water and sewer rates at that time to cover what ended up being an average yearly bond amount of $5.1 million. The anticipated average yearly bond amount for 2020 through 2024 is $7.4 million. Funding for this initiative can only occur through rate increases. Dennison rates remain competitive even with the increases. I'm going to give you that information as well, and we've shared this in the past. The water sewer rate recommendations, this is the base rate for water and sewer. This is what pays for those bonds. And you'll notice anticipated bond amounts for each year, total of $37 million over the next five years. The rates would be effective each December. These are the variable rates for water and sewer, and this is what pays for your operating Here's a water and sewer rate comparison, your current rates based on a 5,000 gallon residential, 10,000 gallon residential, 50,000 commercial, and 200,000 commercial. Shows our current rates for the city of Dennison, shows the proposed rates that would be effective once the new rate goes into place in December, goes from 67.16 to 69.69. The TML city averages for 2019, and this was prior to budget, so a lot of these cities' rates will have increased as well, but their, the city average was $72.63. And then the peer city averages that we use the peer cities for was 77.24, and that's for the residential. And you can see the other differences between commercial as well. We are on the lower end. Water and sewer rates, and this kind of shows you where we will start at currently and each year as we go up over the next five years for those same residential, commercial, gallon usages. Any questions? Staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
If there's no further discussion from council, a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance establishing revised rates and charges for water and sewer service.
There is a motion by Mayor Protim Adams and a second by Councilmember Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Renee, and thank you, Bill, for all of your presentations. So, item 6E, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution enacting the downtown new construction incentive program to encourage new commercial and mixed-use construction in the downtown area. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm excited to present for your consideration tonight, a new incentive program that we've been working on for some time with the Dennison Development Alliance. One of the areas that we haven't covered in our, our stick and carrot approach to development is new, new commercial or mixed-use construction in the downtown area. So, you'll recall that we have incentives for existing buildings to redo their facades. We have a, through DDF, a destination incentive for sort of restaurants and other large destinations that we want to bring downtown. We also have through DCIC some incentives for small business development and, and new business loans. So, we have a number of incentives out there. One area that, again, that we haven't covered is new construction. So, as you know, we're getting ready to start the downtown project next year, and one of the reasons we started on the east end of Main Street was to encourage the development of some vacant lots down there. We want to have another carrot in place to help encourage development. So, what we've put together is a, an incentive program that will, it mimics our renovation incentive program, and in the amount, also mimics our, our facade grant program being capped at $30,000. So, folks that would be eligible for this will include, again, it's got to be in the central area zone, so downtown, either Main Street, some areas, Chestnut, Woodard, even down to Crawford and Gandy. So, in the central area, it has to be a commercial or mixed-use building, not just a strictly residential development. And if it's in the historic district, they have to go through the Historic Preservation Board and receive a certificate of appropriateness as well. So, this would be effective October 1st. The incentives would include reduced building, building permit fees and reduced fees for our solid waste dumpsters, up to two dumpsters at, at a reduced cost. And then the, the largest incentive is going to be our cash grant, which will be equal to 10% of the increase in value, or $30,000, whichever is less, are similar to our facade grant, which is capped, capped at $30,000. This would, this would be capped at $30,000 too. So, Chris, if you can go to the next slide, this is just a map showing the central area, the blue area here. Now, new areas could be rezoned, just like it was tonight, for central area zone, but really the intent of that zone is to stay close to downtown. So, there's not a lot of missing teeth, as I call it, along Main Street, but there's a few areas that we can develop some new construction, and we want to be able to encourage that to be commercial or mixed-use and, and have some carrots in place to help, help that happen. So, that's just kind of a brief overview of the program. It will be through a 380 agreement, so once we move forward with the resolution, we would develop a 380 agreement template that we could bring back to council for approval and work with developers when they have proposals before us that would qualify for the program. With that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Rex. If not, a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution providing a program to encourage new commercial and mixed-use construction in the downtown area as proposed.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6F, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution outlining principles, ideals, considerations, and guidelines by which the city of Dennison will support community efforts to address issues related to homelessness. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you know, this has been a topic of consideration for the city for the last, last, I'd really say, six to 12 months. We've been working with a steering committee that was put together to help guide some of these efforts, been working with the Homeless Empowerment Action Team, or HEAT, to come up with some ideas and solutions. Really, I would say the last few months have been a learning experience for the city as we've really tried to wrap our heads around the issue, and, and really, before you tonight are some, some guiding principles that we'd like to establish as we work with our partners in the community on the homeless issue. The resolution outlines eight different principles that I think will help us make good decisions on the issue of homelessness. I know this is a, a topic of interest. It's a complicated topic. Every city has it, has it a little differently, and every city addresses it a little differently, but I think these eight principles will help really establish us a good foundation for us to move forward and, and guide the efforts of the community to address homelessness. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Ms. Wallantine, were there any cards that wish to speak? As I, I call your name, would you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Micah Blevins, Orydick, 2513 West Coffin, Dennison, Texas.
Allard Bernard? State your name and, and address for the record, please, sir.
Alan Bernard, 566 McCraw Lane, Dennison, Texas.
Do you wish to speak?
I do.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay. Then you, you go ahead and we'll back up to Micah.
Mayor, council, staff, I thank you for your time tonight. I, I have had the opportunity to read the resolution and look at the eight principles. I'm not a politician, and I can't say that I understand the vague jargon of the revol, the resolution. I come tonight thanking the city for the opportunity to, for my wife, Terry, and I, for 39 months to have a faith-based initiative to feed the homeless within the city of Dennison. We feel that we have had a successful mission for 39 months, feeding in excess of 45,000 meals. We, we come asking nothing of the city. We are grateful for the relationship we have, and we come tonight hoping and praying that this resolution has no impact on our, on furthering our mission here in town. Thank you.
I apologize for being out of order. And I just want to state, my name is Micah Blevins. I work at White Walls in Missions and Outreach, and I am, currently serve as Vice President on the HEAT board, which is the Homeless Empowerment Action Team. And I just want to simply read our goal, and it is to provide a hand up and not a handout, to empower, not enable, and to give dignity and hope through love, grace, and accountability. And I just want to thank the city and the council for addressing this as something that we need to look at and find a, a solution or some way to help this current issue in Dennison. And I have HEAT with me. We've, we're here, and we just, we, we thank you for partnering with us, and we listen to and follow and answer God's leading in this.
Thank you.
Sir, please state your name and address. Al Gilbert, 526 West Hall. How you doing, Mary? Remember seeing at the senior center?
Yes.
How you doing, Hander, and other council people here? Especially you, Justin. I remember talking to you about, almost a year ago, I remember having a meeting with you with Sonny about the homeless situation. I have some disabled people that are, that I'm helping out, and the homeless situation as your eight points here, I feel myself, since there is buildings that people cannot sell that are outside the area as you want, or as you have wanted before, you can get those buildings for just a dollar probably, the guy would be happy to give them away. He can write them off on his taxes, and then it would be a place for the people to live at. As I've seen, being here and, you know, and discussing it many times, I understand that Micah and Alan and Terry are doing good when it comes to feeding, but the homeless situation, housing... housing, is needed, as we talked about before. The people I have that I'm talking about are seniors, they're over the age of 60. I mean, something should be done, this is their golden years. You know, it's our golden years, man. It's time. Thank you very much, and may God bless you.
How you doing? Pete Orta? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pete Orta, and I live at 300 East Main Street. I want to speak on behalf of some concerns that I do have, some challenges with the, how we're shaping our homelessness here. Number one, I used to be homeless for a year and a half when I was a young man, and pulled myself out of it with some help of some good people. I also have been working in the homeless industry or ministry for 10 years, I still do. I take in young men that are 17, 18, 19, they haven't, they're at the crossroads, and they're not lifers, they're not long-time users either. So I have worked really hard in cleaning up my area, and that's in, you know, East Main Street. It's been tough, I found drugs there this morning. I have friends that have had homeless people murder, other people in their homes breaking in, they watch cars, they're criminals, there's things that we are lacking a whole lot. So as we're trying to deal with the homelessness, we're also calling them in as well. And we have to ask ourselves, what's our responsibility? That's the main thing, the question that we need to ask ourselves. And yes, we have a responsibility to the homeless, and I gave you my background because I'm not speaking as somebody that's heartless, I'm actually, you know, doing it now, and my wife and I have been doing it for a long time, but we also have a responsibility to the citizens as well. This is very, very important, and, I mean, it goes from theft, it goes to, all the way to murder, and everything that we've seen in this town. And knowing the business owners along Main Street, I mean, there is just a lot of fear that goes on. I have to walk my daughter and my mother-in-law and my wife that live with me from the car to our front door. It's very, very concerning. I had some young men that found some drugs, like I said, this afternoon, and it's just, and it used to be a lot worse. I've worked with the police department here, and I've called, and I've run people off myself, and it has just gotten out of hand. And I think the very first thing that we need to realize is location is everything. East Main is being neglected. And I think that the problem is here, coming from Austin, Texas, is in these bigger cities, you have a downtown area where people are not living. People aren't living there, so you can have a homeless shelter in that vicinity. But here, you've got lofts and businesses, you've got things mixed, so I think location is very, very important. I think we should help, but at the same time, there's not a lot of accountability that's going on. I know the homeless environment, I hear the stories, but I also see the sham. I also see how they're manipulating and being users as well. I know it very, very well. And I was just shocked, and it's hard to even speak of that, because if you're not in the particular industry, it looks cold, but it's a responsibility that we have, not only to help, and I used to be all heart, no head as well, but you also have to look at the community, too, and protect. And so we just have to make sure that we're looking at that, we're not a big city, and how many resources are we going to have? And per capita, how many homeless people are we going to have? So we've got to regulate something, we've got to put things in place so we can shape it correctly, because if it is getting out of hand, and you're hearing everybody talk, we don't know what to do, but how much of us is self-inflicted? We have to do things on purpose, we have to do things to shape, you're going to blow money, you're going to risk lives at the same time. Lives have already been risked. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I've read the agenda and things like this, there are solutions, but they're tough solutions, and we've got to face these solutions on the front end, not the back end, and I feel like that's the road that we're going down. So I just wanted to express my concerns. I do have answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orta. I can't begin to tell you how much time and thoughtfulness has gone into this resolution this evening. This is not something that occurred quickly and without much, much thought. Homelessness is a universal problem. It's not just something that exists in our community. Many cities, much larger and with many more resources, including those with decades of experience working with the homeless, have tried to solve this problem with little success. Our city must approach this problem with the greater good of our entire community at the forefront. While at the same time, I'm sorry.
I want to speak in a minute about the property locations.
Okay, ma'am, the property location is, ma'am, excuse me.
I know Mr. Orta there was speaking about it. I live, I'm Clary Striggs, and I live at 306 East Main, and I think the property that you have in mind is on South Crockett, right behind the hotel.
Ma'am, there is not a location in mind, there is not a location that has.
Well, I understood that that is one of the propositions, but that property joins two sides of my property there, and I live next door to the Travelers Hotel, and I do, and I have spent a lot of money out there, and I'm afraid if this went in that location, I probably wouldn't have enough to stay out, wouldn't have enough left to stay out at Wesley Village or someplace. But I do just appreciate saying that I have spent a lot of money on that property out there, and it would be sort of devastating to me to have it right on two sides of my property. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm hard-hearing, and I couldn't hear everything.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not sure where I was, so I will begin. I will repeat that our city must approach this issue with the greater good of our entire community at the forefront. While at the same time, always showing compassion where that is possible. And for those who find themselves part of the homeless community, we have a responsibility to be concerned about that. The objective of any initiative in our community should be to reduce homelessness, not grow it, and never, ever to enable it. And most importantly, it should be a community effort that is supported by all citizens as a whole, because this is a community problem. Over the last several months, an inordinate amount of time has been spent trying to determine the scope of our homelessness problem, the cause of the homelessness in Dennison, and the right solution that works for our entire community to address this problem. We have worked with many in our community who have knowledge of and actively helped the homeless, and to assume that one solution that addresses it in total is simply unrealistic. There had to be a first step, so this resolution is it, to establish a position statement related to the homelessness that clearly articulates what our city will support. We believe this position can be supported by our community as a whole, does show compassion to those who need a way out, and will not, under any circumstances, grow homelessness in our community. We believe this is a guiding document will enable our entire community, including the temporarily homeless, to coexist as we use available resources from all aspects of our community to help those in need of a hand up. So before I ask for a motion on this resolution, I think it is appropriate that we read the position statement into the record. The city will only support strategies and actions that will reduce, not grow, the homeless population. If the community is not careful about how it approaches the issue and allocates resources, Dennison will become a magnet for the homeless, and the overall community issue will grow far beyond available resources. Homelessness is a community issue. The City of Dennison alone cannot solve the problem. Neither can one church, organization, or group of volunteers. The solution must be a joint effort coordinated by community resource leaders with a shared vision and a specific outcome-based objective. Organizations addressing issues of homelessness should take a well-organized and data-driven approach to understanding the problem before offering solutions. Established processes and industry best practices should be used to define the issue. The city encourages small but meaningful actions to address the issue as opposed to sweeping measures that will stretch community resources and place overall community support and confidence at risk. Solutions and initiatives related to homelessness need to be consistent with existing city policies and ordinances and federal and state laws specifically regarding those dealing with health, safety, welfare, and the environment. We need not criminalize homelessness, but must remain vigilant about maintaining the overall health, safety, and general welfare of the entire community. Individuals and families experiencing homelessness will be expected to maintain community standards that are formalized into city policies and ordinances. As a community, we can treat those dealing with homelessness special without giving them special treatment. Efforts to house the homeless should ultimately be temporary in nature and seek to assist individuals and family to transition into permanent housing situations within a reasonable amount of time. Dennison is fortunate to have many local foundations and a generous charitable citizenry. The city intends to be vigilant about ensuring the community's nonprofit sector is right-sized, meaning that new organization should be few and far between, and overabundance of nonprofit organizations will result in duplicated effort and fewer resources to address the many needs in the community. I think that is a realistic position, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution outlining principles, ideas, considerations, and guidelines by which the city will support community efforts to address issues related to the homelessness.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Protim Adams and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with attorney and discuss Senate Bill 944 and Senate Bill 1630 from the 86th legislative session. The time is 7:07, and the council is in executive session.